...from them, so they can't get the strength to...
Good, buddy, how you doing?
Good.
Good to see you.
How do you do, Ben?
Ben? Good, how are you?
Ben.
Hey, Mark.
Hey, Mark. We're live.
Yeah. He actually officiated my wedding.
No kidding?
Yeah. John African. I hope he's still there in five years, because I'm hoping to do my twenty-fifth. I was hoping to redo my vows. Oh, he was working there, actually, he's been there a long time, twenty years, twenty years. A police guy. Last week.
He was a street meter?
No, he's, he's like, he's in, I don't know, I don't even know what his title, oh, he's news director.
So, sort of blocking pushing in.
That's what I'm, that's what I'm looking for.
I never, I never sleep out in a chair.
You didn't have work? Mr. Goodpass.
You don't mean me.
It was coming.
Hey, Dan.
My clock is looking ugly at the end now.
Yeah, it's now it's like hard to read.
It's giving up on us.
It's pretty new.
Doesn't keep time anyway.
I don't, I don't pay attention to it.
Is that an iPhone?
It's got fifteen?
No.
It's just a Samsung, two other phones.
Tell me where's the GNC.
Spit me on the back, I don't know.
Case is really cool.
Protect your phone.
Oh, my daughter bought it. I think she only paid twenty bucks for it.
Yeah, that's a lot better than this.
I mean... Yeah, the only bad thing about it is, it doesn't really have a screen protector, so I cracked it already. Spent all that money on it, and all it's got is a plastic coat. The other one I had was two pieces that went together.
Yeah, well, that's kind of what this is.
As long as there's enough room for people to get through.
Do you?
There's a few chairs up here in the front, on this side, if anybody needs a chair.
Hi.
Good evening, I'd like to welcome you to the special meeting of the Buchanan City Commission, Wednesday, November twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-three, at six o'clock. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Before we get started with the pledge, I would like to read a quick statement. Over the last several days, there's been extensive media coverage concerning the city manager, some of which is not entirely accurate or has been taken out of context. This statement reflects and is intended to clarify my personal and public comments surrounding these issues. I wish to clarify that there are not, and never were, multiple complaints against Mr. Eldridge of misconduct against female employees based on gender or sex. Based on my understanding, there were never any employee complaints of inappropriate or wrongful physical contact or sexual misconduct. However, there was one contested claim of one single comment made about inappropriate clothing in the workplace. Given the ramifications of these issues, I felt it important to clarify these details. I do have copies of that for the press after the meeting also. Will you please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let me roll call, please.
Denison.
Here.
Whedon.
Here.
Bianski.
Yep.
Money.
Present.
Swim.
Present.
You're a quorum.
Thank you. At this time, we'll take public comment on agenda items only. If you'd like to make a public comment, please make your way to the podium, state your name for the minutes. I will be holding people to a three-minute limit this evening, just because we may be here for a while.
I'm Don Ryman, three thirteen West Front Street. Most of the city commissioners don't seem to be aware of the dire circumstances facing the city. If they succeed in renewing Ben Eldridge as city manager, the city will be radioactive as to hiring a new city manager. They will probably be not able to hire one, but a submitted city manager to run the operation of the city is required by the city charter. The city is running on the verge of bankruptcy and faces the threat of having its operation taken over by the state treasurer. None of this is mentioned by Sean Denison, the chosen chair of the city commission and ceremonial mayor of the city, or the city commissioners, other than Dan Bianski.
Thank you, anyone, anyone else wishing to make a public comment?
Good evening, I'm Brenda Badencoff, I'm a resident of Niles, Michigan, but I am a former editor of your newspaper, The Marion County Record, a while back. So I became quite involved with your community, I loved Buchanan. It seemed like a beautiful place filled with great people, and I loved being a journalist at a time when the mainstream media presented both sides of an issue, was even-handed and fair, told the truth, actually, and kept opinions on the opinion page. Unfortunately, I don't recognize the mainstream media anymore, because it does none of those things at this stage in the US situation. However, I still care about Buchanan and the many aspects of life that I reported on here. I'm here tonight because there are issues going on in Buchanan, which have brought many concerned people and citizens to these meetings. I have been attending also, the proposed firing of the city manager is a mistake, when this man has worked as he was hired to do, to reduce the financial problems of the city. So why does the city commission keep spending on projects the city does not need, with money it does not have? The city manager was working to stop unneeded spending. I was surprised to find out that all of you are Republicans. Republicans in general curb spending, so I was not happy to hear that your streetscape program, which will cost millions of dollars. Driving through the downtown, I think it is pretty the way it is. It has a charming hometown look to it, and the plans, as I was hearing them, would, I think, make the town look like cement. Ugly and with narrow streets that would eliminate parking and make it so big trucks could not navigate here. Now, how is that going to help businesses? The city manager has fought to keep businesses here, and the city commission's latest debacles would cause businesses to leave. Buchanan is not a rich town, and residents are already struggling with rampant inflation that is shrinking the money that they have to live on and pay their bills. You bring in someone to help tighten the belts, and then the people say they can't breathe. They say, get rid of the belt tightener, get rid of the city manager. I don't know if you've ever told the people here how the streetscape is to be paid for. Grants, bond issues, more millage, squeeze more blood out of a turnip? Getting rid of the city manager with pay seems like a counterproductive move to me. How will you pay for all these people sitting around with pay that were your mistakes? It seems to me you're busy killing the messenger rather than listening to the message. Remember, you were elected to serve the people, instead of wildly spending money that isn't yours. Remember the Margaret Thatcher quote, that spending is fine until you run out of other people's money? You are servants, serve the people, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to make a public comment?
I'm asking a question for a friend, and that's not meant to be a joke, it's true. My friend comes to almost every commission meeting, she was present at the commission meeting prior to the suspension of city manager Eldridge. And she said that in the comments from the bench at the end, that every one of you praised him and talked about what a great job he was doing. She's curious as to how somehow, in that one week before he was suspended, he became Freddy Krueger. So, maybe you could explain that to her when you're discussing things later, she's here. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to make a public comment?
I have a question, are there going to be comments at the end of the meeting as well?
No, sir.
Okay, then I have to make them out.
It's a bit premature, seeing as how I really don't know...
Sir, can you state your name, please, for the minutes?
I'd better know.
Can you state your name for the minutes?
I'm sorry, uh, my name is Hugh Hagan, I'm at one twenty-two South Detroit. I've lived in, uh, I've only been here for about five or six years, uh, but my forebears have been in Michigan residence since early eighteen hundreds. I'm sorry I have to use this, but I got a bit of a leaky memory. I maybe, uh, have, I have little knowledge of really what the agenda is going to be, and so this is probably more appropriate for the end of the meeting, if at all. I served as an officer in the Navy, uh, engaged for at least two years with NASA, and for many years after the words, I served as a deck officer in, uh, in the marine industry, both ashore and afloat. And when I was on ships, I served in all capacities, including master of ocean-going ships. Ashore, I worked, uh, on the Great Lakes maritime industry, and had offices throughout the Great Lakes. I mention this history is because I think it qualifies me for a reasonable judge as a person's work, work ethics. At last Monday's council meetings, I felt that there, there was a little bit of a character assassination to our city clerk. I felt that she was really unfairly impugned, and I don't know if that really relates to a part of the agenda for this evening or not, that's why I brought this up. I have, I've never, uh, I've never been an employee of the city, and I've never worked, but I have worked as an election official here for a good number of the last elections. And I've never met the city clerk anytime, anywhere, except in this building right here. I was generally impressed at how devoted she was to her job and to her duties. She was always not only diligent, but very knowledgeable, and spent extremely strong hours, long hours here on these elections. And somehow she managed to maintain a cheerful disposition. I never once saw a lack of composure. And a tip of the hat to the ladies here, this is probably not entirely unexpected. It's been my experience that women generally have a much better work ethic than men. They do not need detailed instructions as to how to do things, and, and they might even chafe a little bit when they're told to change what they're doing. I painfully found this out when I first got married. Unlike sailors and longshoremen, women generally are a bit more apt to do the right thing, but are not hesitant to express themselves when doing so. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to make a public comment?
Hi, I'm Penny Slocum Correa. I don't know all of what's going on, just what I've seen, read, you know, on the news and in the paper and on Facebook and everything. But from my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, there was confidential information given by Dan Vagonsky to Ben, and then to other people in town. That was not supposed to be given out, and that's why everybody's here. And that there was complaints, I don't know what they are, I don't care what they are, I don't know who's right, not who's wrong, but... I'm seeing that Ben is saying he's thanking the support from the people that are backing him, and the people that are backing you are the ones that put the information out there. That does not make sense to me. That's not support, that's sabotage.
You're supposed to address us, please.
I am.
Well, then don't...
But I'm not going to look at you straight in the eye, because I don't care less about what you think.
Don't talk to the audience.
Anyways, that's my comment. You know, we're all supposed to be here to better Buchanan, and we're not. We're wasting our time and spinning our wheels on little things that are ridiculous, it's none of our business. That's a personnel business between the city employees, the city attorney, and the commissioners. And Sean Denison is only doing what the city lawyer tells him to do. So I want to know why you're not after him, and you're after Sean. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to make a public comment?
My name is Richard Martin, nine twenty Chippewa, in Buchanan. I've been here forty-three years. I support the city commission very much, I, I think that you gentlemen are above reproach as far as following the rules and things of that nature. But I also have to say that, uh, I've had a number of meetings with Ben, uh, all, all for the Buchanan tree friends. And Ben, you were one of the few people that showed us that you were interested in us. Thank you very much. I think he's been doing, uh, uh, from my concern, he's been doing a good job. So, I trust you gentlemen to do what you think is right, but I, I throw my support toward Ben. Thank you.
Thank you, anyone else wishing to make a public comment? Going once, going twice. Okay. Moving down to new business, uh, the employment status, considering the employment status of Mr. Ben Eldridge. Ben, at this time, would you like to make a statement?
First, um, I want to thank the community for their support, um, and for being here. I, I don't know your name, but I do appreciate your comments. It, it keeps everybody honest, and, and I'm not one of those people who, uh, will shy away from criticism, so I do thank your comments, thank you for your comments. Let me tell you a little bit about how excited I was when I was coming to Buchanan. I, um, had some medical issues, and I, um... Had a, uh, had to have a biopsy done. And in the process, they sent me home from the biopsy, and, and a couple hours later, I got really sick, rushed back to the hospital. In the process of doing the biopsy, they had nicked an artery, and, um, I was bleeding out, and don't remember a whole lot, other than I was rushed to emergency surgery that night. Had all kinds of complications for the next two or three days. It was Monday, I was in the hospital, and I said, I have to be out of here. I, I've got an important meeting tonight that's going to be a life changer for me, and it was to come to the meeting where I was going to sign my contract with Buchanan. And I haven't told a lot of people that story, but just so you know how excited I was here, to be here, I was, I was near death and in the hospital, and I begged to be let go, so I can come here to sign my contract with you guys. And I was, uh, back in the hospital then, a day and a half later, because I shouldn't have been released as early as I was. But that's how excited I was to be here in Buchanan. The other thing that's kind of a disappointment is, in my interview, uh, when I started my interview, I was extremely nervous, I don't know if you remember, um, I made the comment, excuse me for being nervous, I haven't had a job interview in twenty-three years. I'm a little disappointed that I, I wasted my one joke on Buchanan, um, given how it's turned out. Anyways, I appreciate the opportunity, uh, to address you, the city commission, and the public concerning the allegations that were made against me. Sean, I thank you for your, your apology, uh, to begin the meeting. It was this close to being spot-on. I do want to say that, you know, you can't take full responsibility, you, you threw that one thing out there about the high school intern. What I want to let you know, and everybody, and everybody here, um, is that she was talked to not long ago, and she said, I had no problem with Ben, I made no complaint with Ben, I never felt uncomfortable around Ben. So, you know, the complaints are subjective. So, you know, the complaints are subjective. When I was suspended by Sean, you stated it was because another commissioner told me about the complaints, and I need to be suspended to prevent any fear of retaliation against the employees that made the complaints. That comment pretty much sums up what I feel is the mentality of the staff here in Buchanan, most, a lot of the staff. If you don't like something, you retaliate and you get rid of it. Doesn't matter if it's true, doesn't matter if it's taken out of context, but you get rid of it. And I believe this is evident in the amount of turnover that you've had here in City Hall. I don't know the exact numbers, but I've been told it's something like four or five city managers in four years, three clerks, three treasurers, and two bookkeepers in that same amount of time. Maybe you need to start thinking about the staff that you have working for the city. Maybe it's not the fault of the people you're hiring, maybe it's, maybe it's the staff you've had here for years. The next thing I want to say, and make it very clear, and my dad, my dad who's here tonight, he, he said to make sure you address this first thing, and get this out there, because sex sells, and you're not gonna have everybody's attention, because they're gonna be waiting for the juicy details. And the bottom line is, there are no juicy details. There were no sexual misconduct allegations, there never was, and it was put on WSBT at 10:02 on Monday night, where Sean was quoted as saying there were five sexual misconduct allegations, or whatever, from women. I went back and listened to the, to the council meeting a couple times, I didn't hear that said. I called WSBT, and they got back to me and said, "Our bad, we made a mistake. We have no excuse for it, we made a mistake. If you notice on our statements on Facebook, we didn't put that on there, and at our 5:00 AM news, we didn't put that on there." And I spoke to the gentleman before the meeting tonight that's here from WSBT, who again apologized for putting that out there. The problem with that is, is that's something that I'm gonna have to carry for the rest of my life. And I'm gonna have to explain away for every job application I put out for the rest of my life. It's something that, once it's out there, you can't take it back. So it's unfortunate that, in all of this, I'm the one that gets the most character damage from it. So I, in the commission meeting, you know, I've heard, "Well, we need to get Ben's side of the story, we need to hear this, that." Patrick, you commented, "Well, you hadn't had a chance to talk to me, you don't know my side of the story." So I'm not gonna go through all the allegations, or all the complaints, but, you know, as I read through them, and my attorney read through them, and it became very evident that a lot of this was just smear tactics, and stories taken out of context, and a lot of it was just subjective. So I marked a few of them. The first complaint that was made about me was I track city-owned cellphones. And I'll make my comments, try to make my comments brief about that. There is a city employee in City Hall who does not live in Buchanan, he lives in Indiana, and has a habit of coming into, to work at 9:30, 9:45, 10 o'clock, whenever. And I was told by other city staff here at City Hall, that his previous employer had made comments that he would do the same thing there, and that he was actually seen checking on properties that he had in that city, and not at work. And it was suggested to me that, well, we can track his cellphone. I didn't know how to do that, so somebody here set it up, and, and, and it was actually quite stealth-like, she says, "Well, I need everybody's cellphone, so he doesn't get suspicious." And I said, "Well, ask everybody to turn their cellphones in." She said, "I'll have everybody turn their cellphones in, I'll tell my guy to do an update, and hopefully nobody will think anything different." And after a couple days, it was just kind of, eh, I don't even know if the tracking is on the cellphones anymore or not. But that's the reason behind that, there's nothing diabolical about it. Another complaint, "Staff feel unsupported, lacking trust and transparency, constantly closed-door meetings for hours." I did have some closed-door meetings, I had closed-door meetings, I think, with the friend, our tree friends. I met with different residents from the community who wanted to come in and talk about things. I'd say every couple weeks, it seemed like Calla and Deb and Courtney, we'd have a little powwow in my office and just chat for a while. Lacking trust and transparency? Jeez, you know, I don't have an answer for that. I kept you commissioners updated every Friday with an email of what had transpired the previous week. Any little thing that I felt responsible for that was negative, I tried to share it with you guys, I asked you guys for your blessing on some decisions, to which I got responses that, "You don't need to ask us that, you don't have to." But I did. No communication with employees, asking for advice on how to handle situations by policy. No communication with employees. The day after every commission meeting, I had a department head meeting, and it was an opportunity for everybody to sit around the table there, discuss what we got going on this week, and if anybody needed help with anything. I also, I want to say it was back in end of July, August, I had a meeting with the entire city staff, police, utilities, DPW, the office here, to basically say, because I was told that, let me back up, we made a change. We used to take payments for funerals out at the cemetery, and then the guys would bring the cash in here with receipts or whatever. I had a conversation with Calla and Deb, to which they didn't think that was a good idea, and I agreed with them. I think for the protection of the city and the young men working out in the cemetery, that the payment should come here to the office, and be received in here at the office. And that protects them out at the cemetery from somebody paying them a thousand dollars, and then they turn around and say, "Well, we paid them ten thousand." So, and it was said to me, you know, "We tried to get this done under a previous city manager, she said she would do it, there was a bunch of pushback, and it never happened." So, I, 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 so in asking advice on how to handle situations, and, and no transparency, that's just insane. I always sought the advice of my staff here at City Hall, like I said to you, Sean, I'm not a dictator. I try to get, I try to get everybody's opinion and make the best educated decision I can. Has called employees liars when he didn't get the answer he liked. I have no answer for that, I really don't, I... Women in the front office feel uncomfortable with my body language towards them. So when I talk to them up in the front office, I will usually stand like this, I'll sit in a chair, if they're sitting in a chair, I'll sit down in a chair in front of them to be at eye level, and not stand over them. I got no answer for that. No leadership at all. Whatever. Created and fostered an environment of mistrust and suspicion among staff members. Uh, jeez, you know, I, I don't know how to answer that one either. I'm standing here because I trusted the staff that worked for the city, and, talk about mistrust, man, I put my trust in the wrong people, 'cause I'm sitting here fighting for my job. And they want to say that they can't trust me. Seems to intentionally try to cause interpersonal issues among staff members. I thought long and hard about that, and there's only one, one conversation that I had that I think would kind of come close to that. And, and that was a conversation, you know, I had it with you, Sean, at the National Night Out, we talked about Ashley. And, and I said to you, you know, "I think Ashley is, she's gonna be, she's gonna be a shining star, you know, she's, she is, she's going to outshine other staff here in the office." And I told Ashley that. I sat in front of her, and I said, "Ashley, I see real value in the work that you're doing, and given time, I think you're gonna outshine your counterparts in this office." So if that's causing interpersonal issues among staff, my apologies, I'm just trying to build the staff up. Cleaning people, he fired and expected, okay, so I fired the clean, we had, we had a lady here that cleaned City Hall, somebody cleaned the police department, and somebody cleaned at the community center. And knowing our financial situation, I went for low-hanging fruit first, because the city's having an audit done. And until we can find out exactly where we are financially, to make bigger changes, I thought I could go for some low-hanging fruit. So I let the cleaning staff go. The complaint here is the cleaning people. He fired and expected City Hall employees to clean all the City Hall within our work schedule without being compensated. I cleaned the bathroom, the men's bathroom, I cleaned my office. Sean, the day that you and Larry came in to suspend me, I just got done sweeping my office, the hallway, the chamber area, and wiped down the tables, because we were having a meeting that morning. I never asked the staff to do anything that I didn't do myself. Uses his anger as a weapon to get what he wants. I didn't want this. Intimidation tactics. Again, I have no answer for that. Intimidation tactics. I've done nothing but praise the staff when I would make comments after a city council Does not retain information. Okay, well, you know, I'm trying to, to take on a lot here in Buchanan, and sometimes I lose my train of thought, I did just a little bit ago. Sometimes I lose my train of thought, but after a meeting or whatever, I always go back and make notes about what was discussed, so I can remember what was discussed, and any thoughts or ideas that I had pertaining to any meetings or discussions that I had. Enforces a schedule on City Hall, but he does not keep that schedule. Yeah, the City Hall, the office hours are nine to five, I think they are? I was in here anywhere from six o'clock in the morning, and would try to leave at four o'clock in the afternoon, sometimes it'd be four-thirty, sometimes it'd be five. Fridays, I would try to leave at three, sometimes three-thirty, sometimes four. A couple times, it was five o'clock, and I, and I really didn't want to go home, because my wife was mad at me that I was leaving that late on a Friday, after being gone all week, I was a little scared to go home. Yeah, I didn't work nine to five, but, you know, I think one paper read I had ninety-nine I put in my fair share of time in Buchanan, and I loved doing it, and I didn't mind doing it, and I knew I was gonna have to do it, my wife knew I was gonna have to do it, and I did it. But I was here when the doors opened. No evidence of work accomplishment and understanding of position. Diminishes staff accomplishments and takes credit for things he did not do. I have always been the first to give credit to other people. You know, there was a conversation that took place between two staff members after the, the, the time clock procedure was put into place. And everybody, everybody took part in that, everybody did what they were supposed to do, except for one person. And she felt, she came to me, she said, "I feel like he's giving me a big F-U, because I put so much time and effort into this, and he refuses to do it." In fact, his comment to her was, and I quote-unquote, "It means nothing to me." And so I knew she was feeling bad about this, I found this little joke certificate, employee of the moment, and I filled it out for her, and, you know, for, "You're the employee of the moment because you implemented this procedure, and it's kind of a thankless thing that you've done." I told another staff member that sits up front there how valuable she is, and she would always come back and, "Am I gonna get fired, am I gonna get fired?" She always seemed on pins and needles, and I have to tell her, "No, you're fine. I don't want to fire anybody. We need you." Keep in mind, she also came into my office one day, when I was having a meeting with Calla, and completely went off, because of stress of dealing with the public sometime. But that happens, that happens sometimes. We're human, we make mistakes, we go off, and we move on. Publicly diminishes staff projects. Example, chamber article downplayed riverfront project. I really had no idea what that was, so I went back and I read the chamber article that was, that was done on me, and I didn't write it down, this was three weeks ago, and I went back and reread that to see what, what they were talking about. And I think there were three different things in the city that were mentioned, and I said, "Well, you know, we need to look at these projects and ask ourselves, why? Okay, why are we doing this? If that's diminishing a project, I'm sorry, I guess I diminished it." But I was asking the important question, "Why are we doing this?" I wasn't saying we're not gonna do it, but help me understand how this is gonna benefit the city. That's not diminishing anything, that's trying to have a conversation with the other team members here at City Hall. And it wasn't just the riverfront project, I think there were two other projects mentioned in there. I asked the question, one time we had a meeting, Sean, you were there, I think, I think we had an individual there from our financial people, Deb might have been there, Calla might have been there. I said, "Why are we, why are we doing this front street project? What do they, what do they, why do they say we have to do this right now?" What did they, what did they, why do they say we have to do this right now? That wasn't diminishing the project. I was just trying to find out. Again, another instance, another example of, okay, why are we doing this? What's the situation? When showcased with top ten projects from community development, declared he does not care about any of that. I'm not certain I said, I don't care about any of this. I know I said my comment, one of my comments was. I want something in Buchanan that is going to draw people here. They're gonna come to Buchanan. For this reason. And while they're here, they might stay and spend some money in our community. I do very specifically remember saying that. There's a restaurant in Indiana southeast where I live. It was in the middle of nowhere. But people would go to that restaurant just for that restaurant and their food. And I had the same conversation in the previous community I came from. I want something, you know. This community is never gonna be the destination community. But what can we bring here that's gonna cause people to say, let's stop in Buchanan? Let's do this in Buchanan. And maybe spend some money there on our way to Chicago. If that's saying I don't care about community development? Okay. Encourage the incubator. Pursue grants. Throw on the hill. And now is weaponizing them against her. And I see somebody wrote a little arrow pointing to that and wrote Ashley underneath that. I support the incubator. I think an incubator in Buchanan is fantastic. Do I think how the incubator is being handled is a little shady, maybe? But I think an incubator is a great idea. You know, the philosophy is you you start small, you fail small. And I think Ashley said it best uh in in a news interview that. If they go in there and they invest in this. And they can't make it, they haven't lost their whole life savings. Buying a brick and mortar building, putting everything they have into it and then having to fail. They start small, they fail small. And the opposite is as they start small. And they take off, then they win big. I supported that. I still do. Pursue grants? Absolutely. I think the issue I have with. How the city produce pursues grants and unfortunately, I haven't been getting enough time to. To start doing this, but. We need to start having. At least quarterly meetings. With the commission and the staff to take a look at where we're at financially. Okay, we got this project, this project, this project and this project. What kind of grants are out there to cover these projects and what are the match amounts on there? Okay, do we have the money then to meet these match amounts if we get this grant? I don't see that happening now. Right now, we're just throwing a dart at a dartboard for a grant. And hope that we get it and hope we can find the money for our match money later on. But I. Wholeheartedly support pursuing grants. There just needs to be a little bit better planning on it. Thrill on the hill? Not my baby. City commission made that decision to postpone it. Should have never even been on there, thrill on the hill. Here's one. Punched his folder hanging on the wall. I did that. I lost it. I had a moment of weakness. I got angry. I walked out of my office. There's a plastic. Folder thing on the side of the door there. Walked out of my office. Hit it. Walked out to my truck, drove around for about ten fifteen minutes, collected my thoughts, came back in. I did that. And Sean, what I pointed out to you and the attorney. Was after I did that. I immediately came back in. I apologized to the gentlemen that were in my office when I did that. I said, I'm sorry, I'm embarrassed for my behavior and it will not happen again. And then I contacted the commissioners. And I self-reported myself to the commissioners and said, this is what I did. And the response was. Okay. Um yeah, I I punched a folder that was hanging on the wall. Does that make me a violent person? No. Supports community development when there are reporters around. In four months, I've been around one reporter talking about community development and I supported it wholeheartedly. I've never talked to any other reporters about community development. When told about another staff member's pregnancy, he asked if it was intentional. You know, I'm. I need to work on my sensitivity, but I remember that conversation not long ago. And there were three of us sitting out there in the lobby, talking to this young woman and she was telling us her. Her issues. And. I was trying to be sympathetic. I don't know that I ever said, is it intentional? But I was trying to be sympathetic and and I was trying to ask her. I I'm I'm sorry. Was this planned? Are you trying to have more kids? Learned my lesson there. So there are um. Some others that, oh, I didn't mark these, but. Oh, here's here's a page. Here's a complaint filed against me. Uh in reference to the police department. Officers have been coming in the last two weeks complaining of burnout and lack of staff. Okay, um I'm sorry. I completely understand. I completely understand. And you know, what I I had a conversation with you, Mark, a couple of weeks ago in my office there. And uh you know, another thing I didn't get to do and I said, you know. It was the week before this happened, or it was the Friday I got suspended on a Monday, the Thursday, Friday before that. Um I was having conversations, actually for about a week or two, I was having conversations with Courtney about the police department. And then. We started having conversations about the amount of overtime that's paid to the police department because they're understaffed. And so then the conversation morphed into, is it? Is it? Better to hire another full-time officer? Versus continuing to pay the overtime? And in the conversation with you, Mark, I said, I I was telling you this, I said, actually, and and. The paperwork was still on my desk that I had gotten on Friday. I said, look, I even have it highlighted, how much overtime was paid to the police department? Mark, we're working on getting another police officer. We're 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 working on the numbers. On on hiring a new police officer versus continuing to pay overtime. And in doing that, you know, it might save the city some money in overtime pay and it relieves some of the stress of all the work that the police department does. So. So you guys know, I was in the process of working in that. I think the paperwork should still be on my desk showing that. The DPW. Concerns with the union abolishing the union, not replacing staff, but feels he can go out there and do the work of the union. I never once said I want to abolish the union. I had never dealt with the union in my previous life. But the interim city manager before me, he left a packet. It was it was stamped confidential. I got one. I think Sean got one. I don't know if the rest of you got one. But one of the things he put in there that should be looked at is the union contract because that's coming up for negotiations next year. The benefits that they get. And so. I tried to have a conversation. And asked about the union. Do you think it's beneficial? What's the union do for you? What's the union do for the city? Do you think you guys want to continue in the union? Should we get rid of the union? What are your thoughts? Because I don't know. Abolish the union, never tried to. Not replacing staff. Yeah, I uh. I I wanted to put a hiring freeze until our audit was done. So we could find out exactly where the city is financially. There was a young man who was unhappy here from what I was told by the. The girls in the office was, well, he's he gets picked on and made fun of a lot down at the DPW. He's just not happy here. He wants to go somewhere else. There was a gentleman who was working at the wastewater plant. He didn't really want to be at the wastewater anymore. He wasn't happy there. He wanted to go back to DPW. So I knew we were losing this person. He wants to go there. The head of the wastewater. Great kid. And uh he said, yeah, it's gonna be tough, but we can do without him. We'll operate this plant with two of us. We'll make it work. So yeah, I didn't hire anybody new, but I moved staff around to fill a vacancy when there was one there. Go out and do the work at the union. Well. In my interview, I think I said one of the things I was going to do when I started here was take a look at our. Facilities and see what we have, see where we're lacking, to see where we can be more efficient. Um to see where we can operate more effectively. Because we have to be, in the end, we are accountable to the taxpayers with their tax money. I'm assuming this has to do with that day that I went to the cemetery. It was that that young man's last day to talk to him, wish him good luck. Get any um. Thoughts on him and what we could do different. I asked the head of the cemetery what they were doing. He said, they're blowing leaves. Said, I want some help. And he said, sure, we're not gonna turn that away. So. I helped them blow leaves for a couple hours. To see what they were doing, to see how they did it, to see if they needed um another piece of equipment. I did it for two hours, took them out to lunch afterwards, all three of them. Tried to get to know them, talk about their kids, their families, what they did in high school, sports they played. Not trying to replace a union worker, just trying to do what I told you, the commissioners, I was going to do when I got hired here. A complaint here. I made a comment about how. Another staff member here at city hall looked tired all the time. I remember making that comment. Excuse me for caring about the staff that works here at city hall. I'm sorry I cared. Oh, and I put my my foot in her face to show her my socks. I I had a pair of socks made that has a picture of a headshot of me and a headshot of my daughter's calf. And they were laughing, what's on your socks? I lifted my foot up. Yeah, sorry. Here's a good one. Conflicts with working schedules and different pay raises that were promised. Pitting. Two employees against each other, went back on offers that were made verbally and written. When confronted on September first, twenty twenty-three. He was angered and denied that happening. Had a closed-door meeting with that young woman. So. There was an individual that works here in city hall and she was having childcare issues. We talked about it. And I had already talked to Sean at at National Night Out. I talked to our. Treasurer about our our finances. And about giving this young lady a pay increase. And she presented a couple scheduling options for me. And after reviewing it. Because. There was no need to work from home anymore. There's no need to work remote. We can be here in the office and we can do our work. And some of the comments I got from other ladies in the office was, well, when we had kids. Our employer wouldn't let us do what we wanted. They wouldn't work around our schedule. We had to work around theirs. But. I know how nice it was for my wife's previous employers to. Help her and support her when we had our kids and allow her to spend time at home with our kids. And. Again, I'm not a dictator that says this, 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 this. And so I said, yes, here's what I can do. I'll let you work a hybrid schedule. The hours that she offered to work from home. And the hours that she offered to be in the office. I can give you a five percent pay increase. But I really need you back in the office by December first, full-time. Okay. Typed it up. Gave it to her. To to sign off on. Went into Calla's office. Was having a conversation with Calla. This young lady comes in. Pretty hot and irate. You lied to me, you're playing me. Just raking me over the coals. Because she thought her pay increase was supposed to be effective immediately. I thought the pay increase would be effective December first. Complete misunderstanding. I I was bending over backwards. To allow her to work from home when she wanted to and allow her to work in the office when she could and give her a pay increase. I apologized up and down, up and down, up and down. I will go fix this right now for you. I went, retyped it, made the pay increase effective immediately. I went into her office. I sat down in a chair across from her, so I would be eye level with her, not standing over her, apologized again to her. And said, complete misunderstanding. I am so sorry. And then I said, you know, it's no secret that the previous city manager didn't like you and didn't want you here. To which she then told me, yeah, he threw papers at me, he yelled at me, called me names. And and I was told to look into the the Lub Buchanan stuff, that he wasn't quite sold on that. And I said, it's no it's no secret the previous city manager didn't want you here. I said, but I see real value in what you're doing. I see real value in your work that you're doing. And given enough time, you're gonna outshine your coworkers. And then there's a complaint like this. A situation where. I tried nothing but build her up, give her what she wanted. Make it easier for her. But because she tried to give me some advice. About a comment that I made in a city council meeting. And when she left my office, I said, thank you. I'll keep that in mind. I appreciate your your comments. In a conversation I had with another employee. I did say um. Yeah, I didn't appreciate this and I didn't appreciate this and it's not gonna happen again. And so you can talk to her or I will talk to her. And from that moment on. It was never the same. But I'm gonna admit, I was kind of shocked and saddened that I tried to help you like that. So. There's a. Couple other. Things here that I wanted to uh to talk about. One of the complaints from. One of the complaints from. The DPW was, the road going back to, to the river. The road had washed out, the storm pipe, the drainpipe had broke off. The road was starting to corrode away. It needed to be fixed. I wanted to make sure if we were gonna do it, we're gonna do it right. So I asked. A contractor that I had used in my previous city. If he would come take a look at it, see if it'd be something he'd do and to give us a quote on it and to give us. His take on how it should be done properly. They've been doing this type of work for years. That's all they do, municipal work. We talked about it. He gave his opinions. He sent a quote. I talked to Mike Baker about it. Mike Baker said, we can do this. He said, my guys will actually be excited to take on a task like this. Okay. The complaint that was made. Was. First of all. I tried to give a contract work to a buddy of mine. If I had a nickel for every time somebody at the DPW said, well, I've got a buddy. I've got a buddy. I'd be in Florida right now, not sitting here pleading my case to you guys. How hypocritical. Secondly, the comment was made, we were able to do it ourselves and save the city thousands of dollars. That's fantastic. I'm happy they were able to accomplish that. I hope they feel accomplished in the work that they did. But. I think people who live in glass houses shouldn't throw rocks. They wanna talk about saving money. The city commission allowed the DPW. To purchase a leaf vac, I'm sorry, not a leaf vac, a leaf baler. Knowing that we do not have the equipment. To haul or pull that leaf baler. Knowing that the city turns around and pays a four thousand dollar check for rent to another DPW worker to rent his tractor. Tell me that's not a conflict of interest. I congratulate the DPW for saving money on fixing that drain project. So we can turn around and give it to a DPW worker to rent his tractor to pull our leaf baler. Then in conversations with the DPW, they say it takes five guys to do the, to use the leaf baler. One person in the tractor, one person in a truck behind it, one person in the. Backhoe, one person to pick up the leaves. Wow. They should pat themselves on the back for all the money they saved the city. Another complaint was, I'm taking away their overtime, changing the way they do things, absolutely. They were gonna flush hydrants. It's time to flush hydrants. Okay, what's your process? Well, I just want to let you know we're gonna have overtime flushing hydrants. I asked why? Well, we do it at night and, okay, well, why don't you do it during the day? Well, it takes four people. Okay, how many hydrants do you have? And they told me. How many routes do you have flushing hydrants? Well, we have two routes flushing the hydrants. I said, you have two people. Flushing, or four people flushing hydrants. Yes. Why? Well, because some of the hydrants are kinda hard to open. You gotta put a cheat bar on it. It takes two people to open those hydrants. To which my response was, do you think maybe there's a problem and the hydrant needs to be maintenanceed or maybe replaced? Uh, yeah. So let me tell you what happens when you have four people flushing hydrants. Not only are you paying four people overtime. Because they wanna work during the day and then work at night. But you got two people. Who ninety-nine point nine percent of the time are just sitting there watching the water blow out of the hydrant. And I know that firsthand because I flushed hydrants twice a year. By myself. And it would take me three days. And I did that. Also doing my responsibilities at the water plant, the park department, the wastewater. I'm not claiming to be an expert. But it's not rocket science when you flush a hydrant. You take the cap off. You open it up, you let it blow till the water's clear. You shut it down, you put the cap on, you move to the next one. So ninety-nine point nine percent of the time, two guys are standing there. Watching the water blow out of the hydrant and you're paying overtime for that. I'm not gonna apologize for changing that procedure. That is saving the city money. Changed everything we do and tells us how many people we can have on a job. I have not changed everything they do. I changed the hydrants. Yeah. How many people you can have on a job? I don't think I ever said how many people you can have on a job. Other than the hydrants, you can have two people. Do I think things need to be changed? Yeah, I remember my first week here, they were putting in the, the big meter over at Clark Testing. And it was, I was going past Clark Testing on my way home. And so I thought I'd stop in and take a look at this, this big meter that they were putting in the pit. And I get there and it's, I don't know who it was, the contractor was at the city contracts to put the meter in for them. And there and they're working in the pit and there's probably. Five or six city employees just standing there watching. On the clock. There's your overtime. Standing there watching a contractor that we're paying to put a meter in, standing there watching them, drinking their cans of death water or whatever it's called. There was a complaint about the CDL, said, I don't care if they get a CDL license, even though it's in the union contract. Again, taken out of context. The union contract says that they will, they will get a CDL license within a certain amount of time of their employment. There was an individual who wanted to get their CDL. My conversation with the union rep was. Is this, and this is why I asked it, because it used to be fairly inexpensive to get a CDL license. I was told by the head of the DPW that it is now four thousand dollars to take the course to get your CDL. So my question to him was, okay, I know the contract says this. Is that in the contract because the union is requiring that or is that in the contract because the city is requiring that? If it's the city that's requiring that and the employee doesn't want to get a CDL, I'm okay with that. I'm okay with saving that four thousand dollars. Instead of making the employee do something he doesn't wanna do. But what that got reported as is. I'm going against the union contract. And I don't care. So. In conclusion. When I was hired here, I knew the city had a large amount of debt. And you're going to be increasing that debt. With your infrastructure project and the DPW building construction project. I worked hard. I worked my hardest to help the city become solvent. I asked everyone to be accountable for their work, including myself. According to the city commission, I'm the city manager, I'm salary, I don't have to punch a time clock. But I did. Because it was important to the employee who went out and researched that procedure and implemented it. It was important to her. And I am a team player. I don't have to punch a time clock, but I did. When I was hired here, I was told by several people. I always ask opinions. What are the top two or three things I need to work on? And it was always treasury, treasury. Treasury from some people. Finances. Finances. And rebuilding relationships. At the city Buchanan didn't have very good relationships, relationships have kinda died out over the years. With, with townships, with, with different. Different members of the community. Rebuild these bridges. And the treasury. And I like to think I did. I was told by staff. Negative things about certain groups in the community. They're whiners, they're complainers. They're the mean girls club. But everybody had a clean slate when I started here because I didn't know anybody. I'm not from here. I have no ties, no political agenda. But to make Buchanan the best that it could be. One person I was warned about was James Busby. Him and Mr. Brown met with me in my office. We had a good conversation. They had some concerns, some stuff that they wanted, would like to see worked on on the north side of the neighborhood. I couldn't give them everything they wanted. But there was some, some low-hanging fruit that the city could do, the city should have done, and we did. I sat in Mr. Busby's living room with him and Mr. Brown and talked about all kinds of stuff, our family, our kids, the neighborhood, the city Buchanan. I had a conversation with the two of them. After a commission meeting. And, and one of the complaints that the city attorney asked me about was. A racial complaint. From a conversation I had with James Busby after the commission meeting. And. I knew right away that that didn't come from Mr. Busby. It didn't come from Mr. Brown. It came from one of the two people, city staff, that were sitting there listening to the conversation. The funny thing about that is, a couple days before, I got a phone call from Mr. Busby saying, hey, how you doing? We support you. I talked to Mr. Busby again yesterday. He's a good man. He cares about Buchanan. The downtown businesses. I needed to rebuild bridges with the downtown businesses. They felt discriminated against by the city. They didn't get this, they didn't get that. I didn't know any of them. And so I went down there and I met with them. After one meeting, I walked out of their restaurant and I thought, holy smokes, that was the wrong place to go to first because I got an earful. But you know what? They're legitimate complaints. And I listened to them. And I like to think I have a good relationship with them. And I'm proud to call them friends too. I worked for the community. That's what my main goal was. There's nothing personal in it for me. It was about Buchanan. And here you got two women here in the second row that. Didn't like each other, opposite ends of the spectrum, and tonight they're taking selfies together. There was another individual. I had a conversation with. And a very smart man. I think it's fair to say that he's probably rubbed some people the wrong way in the past. But who hasn't changed over the years? Who hasn't made mistakes over the years? Who doesn't regret some of the. They look back and might think dumb mistakes that they made over the years. And uh. Again, I don't know anybody. I'm not from here. I had no agenda. But I talked to him. I read his emails. And I wanted to give him a chance to serve on the city planning commission. Knowing. That if things got dicey, he could always be removed. It's that simple. He could be removed. But let's give him a chance. Who hasn't made mistakes in their past? Let's give him a chance. Two commissioners, right away said absolutely not. The third commissioner I sent an email to, never responded to me. After all that has been said about me. And the lies and out-of-context stories made about me, half-truths. This circus that we're going through right now. Escalated to the point where one news organization reported there are sexual misconduct allegations against me. And my kids are calling, what's going on, Dad? My friends are calling, what's going on? My previous coworkers, what's going on? Are you okay? People from Buchanan to Southern Elkhart County saw on the news an allegation about me that is completely false, inaccurate, and never happened. Everybody that works for the city wants to complain, boo hoo. He put. He asked if I was tired. He, he went out and blew leaves for two hours. He works ninety-nine hours a pay period instead of working just nine to five. And you know what? They're all sitting cozy here in their positions in Buchanan and I'm up here in front of everybody trying to defend myself. After all the lies and out-of-context stories made up about me. I don't feel I can go on being a part of the administration here in Buchanan. I don't want to be part of what I feel is a toxic environment. You know what I was thinking about all this? The one thing. The one thing that. Hurts the most and I'm most disappointed in. I trusted you, Calla. And I know you, I know you know that not everything is true. And I know you have a legal obligation. To submit. Complaints that were filed against me. But you also have a moral obligation to do what's right. You are a smart woman. You know your job better than anybody. You would talk about all the election hoops that the state's making you jump through and my email response was, I know you'll get through it. If anybody can do it, I know it's you. That's the one that hurts the most. But I will be okay. I feel most sorry for the residents here in Buchanan who have to continue to carry the burden of a high tax rate and high utility bills. So effective tonight, I am formally submitting my letter of resignation.
Oh, no! No, don't do that. You're sorry, Sean. You're absolutely sorry.
Somebody like to make a motion to accept his resignation.
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to not accept his resignation and to move forward. I want, I want that to be rescinded. I want these assholes, excuse me for cussing. I want these guys to make a decision. They assassinated you. Make them stand up. I make a motion that we do not accept this resignation and that we go forward and we make a decision because everything he stood there for an hour and a half is true. This was Ben. This was Ben, character assassination, this man here, that man there, wanted to fire him from the very beginning. And Penny Slocombe? I did not, I did not give anybody confidential information. I gave him information that he was entitled to. And he was gonna fire him, he was gonna snowball this so this didn't happen. And you can shake your head, but you live in Galene now, so stay in Galene. Stay in Galene.
We, we have a, um, we have a motion on the floor, is there support?
I'll support.
Can we roll call?
Dennison?
Or is there a discussion?
If you want discussion.
You guys gotta make the decision. This is, this is what you guys wanted. You decided to hang the captain instead of the mutineers. And I was accused of laughing and calling this forty-two allegations bullshit. Well, that's what it was, that's what it is.
I'm gonna ask, I'm gonna ask you once to, to, to please not, not curse.
No, 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 no.
No, there's no cursing, or I'll have you removed. I, exactly, and we can discuss it without you cussing.
No, I'm gonna cuss, because it deserves cussing.
No, if you cuss one more time, I'm gonna have you removed.
Really?
Yeah.
Dan, you can accomplish what-
So look, we have, we have a motion, we have a motion on the floor.
Dan, you can accomplish what you're trying to accomplish without cussing, you know you can.
Well, no, the words need to be said.
I know, but you-
And it's so childish up here.
We have a motion on the floor to-
We are still in discussion, aren't we? You asked me to stop cussing, so I'm gonna continue without cussing.
Okay, go ahead.
You know, you think you're so stroked up, powerful, you're not. You're a commissioner, sir. You didn't consult your commissioners about any of this. We could've called an emergency meeting and done this without paying him five thousand dollars. We could've done what we just did for an hour in closed session if we had to. You didn't call it, and you guys gave bad advice, and you followed him. Every one of you followed him, for whatever reasons you wanted to follow him for. This is garbage.
All right, we're having a discussion. So on eleven-three, at eight o'clock in the morning, I received written complaints and allegations from the different departments. I notified the city attorney, and I took written complaints to the Niles office of the city attorney so that they can make copies of them. And I notified the commissioners of said complaints. This was a Friday, this is Friday, eleven-three.
You didn't discuss-
Saturday, eleven-four, I shared the written complaints with the commissioners so they could review them and ask them to keep the information confidential. At eight forty AM, I sent that. At three oh eight, I received a call from Ben Eldridge after he received the complaints from Mr. Bianski. You know, every, everyone's talking a, about these allegations like we made them. We didn't make the allegations, but when someone, we have a responsibility as commissioners and as employers, and I do as a mayor, that if I'm contacted by three or four different departments in the city, that I have to at least investigate it. I can't just say no and walk away.
You haven't investigated it. You didn't investigate it.
It happened on Friday, eleven-three.
And you didn't contact me till four o'clock?
Can I finish? Let me finish.
Because you called the lawyer before you called me. The only person you-
Because I knew you were gonna do what you did.
You're protecting his job, you're protecting Ashley Reekle.
I'm protecting the city of Buchanan.
No, you don't care about Mike Baker, you don't care about Calla, you don't care about, you don't care about the chief, you don't care about Mr. Gannus. You're worried about Rich Murphy not keeping his job. And he should've been fired immediately when Ben had his breakdown. You know, you're pathetic. And Mr. Lawyer, you do not have a job if I have anything to do with it, 'cause you gave him very poor advice, very poor advice. Nothing to do with HR. You didn't point out to him what his powers are, you didn't point out to him that he could've had an emergency meeting, we didn't follow protocol at all. We followed mutineers. We didn't hang the mutineers, we hung the, we hung the captain. And excuse me for not delivering correctly, excuse me. In the Chamber of Commerce, Fran, you're just as guilty for backing this guy up. Yes, you are, you put it on your letterhead out there. You know, stay neutral. Everybody needs to stay neutral. And as far as Calla, calling her out, I cried the day I got thrown out of here for so-called hostile workplace environment. I can't even get into city hall now. So excuse me for not thinking very much of these guys, but I gotta continue to work with them, 'cause I'm not leaving. Call the governor, I guarantee it, call the governor. You can smile, buddy.
We have, we have a motion on the floor, and we have support. The motion is to deny his resignation, can we have roll call, please?
Dennison?
No.
No.
Bianski?
Yes.
Money?
No.
Swam?
No.
This is the way it was gonna go anyhow, folks. They just, uh, Ben resigned, they were gonna fire him anyhow, just the way they voted. So that should be heard, that should be very closely attended to. You're a sorry bunch of people, you really are a sorry bunch of people. I'm really sorry that I have any sort of relationship with any of this.
You know, I, I was, it made me think of something when Sean said that, you know, he had complaints from higher management departments, and they had to be investigated, and they had to be looked into, and they had to be taken serious. And I agree with that, they do. But I don't know who all filed the complaints. I, I know some of them are pretty obvious. But I'm gonna come out and tell everybody right now. If you think I didn't have your back, Rich, I was asked on multiple times to fire you, and I said no. One night after a commission meeting, you were raked over the coals. I like Dan, I appreciate Dan, Dan's been very supportive. But you were raked over the coals by Dan, and Dan and I went in my office after the meeting and talked about it. And I told Dan, that wasn't appropriate. It's not appropriate to, to talk that way to an employee, and it is certainly not appropriate to do it in a commission meeting in front of the public. Harvey and Tim, I met with the commissioners, Dan was on vacation, he knew about it, he got the notes, I met with the commissioners two at a time about the police department. Every single one of them wanted you, Tim, as police chief, and wanted Harvey out. I presented that to you, Tim. Actually, it wasn't to get, get rid of Harvey, it was, I wanna keep Harvey but not as police chief. Let me come up with some thoughts, I'll get back with you next week. You got back with me. You threw yourself on the sword so Harvey can stay where he's at, and I admire that. I informed the commissioners of your decision and my decision to keep Harvey where he's at, to which I was told, I, I, I have the email, I'm not sure of the exact words, but I was told by one of the five commissioners in an email, well, basically to the effect of, "I, I don't necessarily have faith in Harvey's ability to lead, but we'll find out when Tim is gone." I supported you, Harvey. They wanted you gone. Mike Baker, every single one of them wanted you out of the position you were in. I came here and I wanted to divide up the departments. You have a very capable and licensed wastewater operator, a very capable and licensed water operator, and a very capable and hardworking maintenance supervisor. So my happy compromise was, let's let the wastewater manage themselves, let's let the water manage themselves. And Mike, you, you're still gonna be over DPW and cemeteries and do your thing. Every single one of them did not want you. But I kept you where you're at, I had your back. I had a lunch conversation with Courtney and Calla about this very situation. And it was suggested that I get rid of you. I said, "If, if I get rid of you, who do I move up, Clay?" And the comment that was made was, "Neither." And you can shake your head all you want, Calla, but you know it's true. We sat at the taco place in Niles and had that conversation.
You didn't ask me that.
Let's not, we're not gonna have a back and forth, okay?
Absolutely true, Mike. But I kept you where you're at. I let Andy do his thing at the wastewater, and I let Craig do his thing at the wastewater. Ashley, I gave you everything you asked for. I got the, I got the dates wrong, I'm sorry, but I immediately corrected that.
Ben, if, Ben, if your intentions now are just to burn city hall down on your way out-
No, it's not to burn city hall down, I could really burn city hall down.
We, we don't need to do personal attacks.
It's not personal attacks, I just wanna let everybody know that I had your back. I had your back, and the city commission denied. And that's all I have.
Someone like to make a motion? Someone like to make a motion to accept his resignation?
I'll show him.
Thank you, there's support.
I'll support.
Favor roll call, please?
Whedon?
Yes.
Bianski?
No.
Money?
Yes.
Swam?
Yes.
Dennison?
Yes. Thank you. With that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I'm in said motion.
Thank you. There's support?
Thanks for destroying Buchanan.
We need support.
Favor roll call? Thank, I need support.
We need support.
I adjourn. Roll call.
Bianski? Just take a motion, just say-
All right. Everybody in favor of adjourned, say aye.
Aye.
Adjourned.